One, two. There it is, right there. I want to call the meeting to order. Nope, I know. So, would you take a roll?
Marty. Uh, Dobby.
Here. Here.
Cheryl, ahead.
Yeah. Get everybody.
Yeah. Pam.
Pam.
She's not here today.
Okay, okay, Pam's not here. Do we have a form?
Yeah.
Yes, and I declare the meeting open and I would like for everybody to stand in your place. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item of this is to find out where we sit with the sewer plant progress. And I would like to, I'm gonna introduce you to Viv, who is the, our go-between, all-powerful, whatever, with JEO, which is our city engineer. And I asked them to come because they know all the language and all that that we don't know, and then two heads are always better than one, and they can interpret this and go along, et cetera. And I'm, and she kind of stepped out and put this meeting together in spite of these people, so I'm gonna turn it over to her and let her do the introduction.
Thank you. Again, my name is Viv Nivotny. I'm the Client Relations Manager at JEO. And I did put this meeting together, you know, we're just trying to come together, you know, we heard that you guys didn't have a lot of info, and that's definitely what you need to make a good decision. So, Marty, I think we'll just have everybody introduce themselves and tell them why they're here. Marty?
I'm Marty Ostransky from the Midwest Assistance Program. Our company originally got asked by the DEQ to come and help. The treatment plant was running out of compliance. Another person, Tim Rankin, came in and helped them do some modifications to the plant to get it back into compliance. They were basically baleen wire and duct taped some of the things, but it did get back into compliance, but the DEQ was still pushing them to update or do something. It was also, it's got transferred to me, it was to do an income survey for the town to try and prove the income of the town was low enough to get some grants and some subsidies from the government. We decided to wait on that until they decided what they're doing, because the income survey is only good for so long a period of time, and we didn't want to get it done and then have it expire before they got ready to look for financing. So, I'm just here because I've been with the project for a while, and if they need my help to do some of the financial things or to do an income survey, then I'd be here to help with that.
And I'm Ryan Brandt. I'm with the engineering firm Kirkland Michael. We got involved in the wastewater project a few years after it started, after DEQ got involved, and we've been working with the city, trying to give options and information and help with moving the project along and secure funding and get the city informed to make a decision on which option is best for the community. So, I'm gonna give a background, starting with, before Marty had to get involved, and kind of what led to the project and how we worked through it and where we're at today.
And I'm Roger Prossman. I'm also with JEO Consulting Group. I'm from Norfolk, and again, I was just asked, I do the same type of work with Ryan, and so if there's some additional questions that JEO can answer, then we'd be happy to assist them that way.
Can you all hear me without the microphone?
Be honest if you can. It's there.
So, this project kind of got started with development on the northwest side of town. Plans and specifications were sent to the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality for their approval for construction. And when that happens, the state, the DEQ, they review the plans, but they also want to make sure that the wastewater treatment plant that's gonna be receiving the sewage flows is sized appropriately for growth and for new houses. So, that triggered the DEQ to come out and do an inspection of the plant. They wanted engineering study done of the plant to show what the capacity was and to prove that it could handle additional flows. That, that all started in 2014. In 2015, the city had an engineering firm come in and do a facility plan of the whole wastewater system. They inventoried all the collection mains in town and the lift stations and the wastewater treatment plant itself. They made four alternative recommendations, either rehabbing the existing plant, which would involve replacing the mechanical equipment and some of the piping and valves and adding on to the sludge handling process. They also looked at evaporative lagoon system, which would be going off-site and creating a whole new lagoon system that would use evaporation essentially to remove wastewater along the seepage. They also looked at a smaller-sized lagoon that would use land application for removing the wastewater. Treated wastewater would be applied through a center pivot or some other irrigation means onto farmland or pasture land. They also looked at a brand-new mechanical treatment plant located adjacent to the existing plant, but all new structures and equipment. That study provided cost estimates for each of those options, and at the time that was completed in 2015, the recommendation, the ultimate recommendation of the plan was to rehab the existing treatment plant, using the existing structures that are there, just replacing the mechanical equipment and upgrading everything to meet current standards from the DEQ. Nothing was really done with that report. I think the previous council maybe discussed the alternatives and were discussing funding, but nothing was ultimately decided. We were brought on in 2017 to, to push that forward, to use that document to secure funding for rehabbing the existing plant. Well, this was all going on, I guess, right before that. The DEQ did some more inspections, and they didn't like how the plant was, was operating, I guess, it was, as Marty said, but it was being operated, it was meeting the discharge limits, but it didn't beat the DEQ requirements for a plant. It wasn't up to date on some of their requirements. Some of the mechanical equipment was older and, you know, some of the controls in the plant weren't functional anymore. Larry was doing a commendable job keeping everything running and with what was there, but ultimately something needed to be done. But the DEQ issued a consent order, which is a legal document that gives a schedule or a timeline when certain things need to be completed to keep the city from getting any fines from them. So, we came in, we reviewed the report that was prepared by another engineering firm, and with the city's approval, we submitted it to the Water/Wastewater Advisory Committee. That's a group with the state that has four different funding agencies. Three of them fund wastewater projects. The state, the DEQ, has a state revolving loan, state revolving fund program, which provides low-interest loans for these type of projects. USDA provides loans and sometimes grants for these type of projects, and the Department of Economic Development sometimes provides grants for these type of projects also. That committee reviewed the report that was prepared, and they look at the overall project costs and try to determine which department would be best suited for funding the project based on what it would do to the community's user rates. They assume that the user rates are what's gonna be used to pay back any loans that they issue. So, based on that, they decided that the USDA's funding package would help keep the city's user rates lowest. Came out of that meeting, the USDA had the report that was done before the full selection was done, but after it was determined that they were gonna be the best funding source, they went into the report further and decided they didn't like some of the numbers that were in the report that were used for the cost estimates. The mechanical treatment plant options, both rehabbing the existing plant and building a new mechanical treatment plant, both used a 20-year term for the loan, which is common, but they also felt that the lagoon options had a longer lifespan, so they should be evaluated using a 40-year loan. And if you change the loan terms and the design life to 40 years on the lagoon options, that made the land application looking more cost-effective. When we came back to the city with that, the USDA representative is here now, but they, we met out on site, I think, last summer with USDA and talked about the two options, and USDA was gonna talk internally and determine if they were gonna provide two different funding packages for the two different options. Obviously, they have a, they would prefer the, the more cost-effective option of using their numbers and would have a more favorable funding package for that option, and we don't know yet if they would fund the other option. I don't know if you guys had any more?
Well, I tried to get hold of my boss, and she was in a meeting this morning, so unfortunately I wasn't able to get in contact with her.
And that's fine, but once we get that, we also looked at other options. If the community doesn't want to use USDA funding for the project, if you, if it's not favorable or if it's not the option that the community wants to pursue, we also talked to Emeritus. Brad Slaughter provided a funding package for the two options using the cost estimates that we had. And we can also go back and look at the SRF, the low-interest loan package that the DEQ provides, but once we get some numbers from USDA, we'll put together a cost comparison showing each project alternative, and then three different funding methods for doing that, show both what that would do for user rates, if user rates were, were used to pay back the loans, and also through Emeritus, we could use other, other methods to pay back the money, municipal bonds or assessments. So, that's where we're at right now, is we just need to get some solid numbers for funding options, put it together to compare them all, and answer the questions you guys have to give you the most information we can to you guys make the decision that feels best suited for the community.
Has there been any research done on how eligible we are for grants? Because we need to look at that first in the funding, and we keep hearing the word "grants," 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 and then we don't see any grants, and we don't see, and I know I'm new to this game, but every time you look at somebody's study, you don't have low enough income for this, and so what are our chances?
Well, that's, that's where the census, when they've changed the last census, they didn't go around and survey the people, they just took a handful, and most of the censuses are way higher than what the MHI needs to be, even though the town knows that that's not the fact.
You mean the survey?
The census. Census shows your income level high or than what it takes to get, to be able to get grants.
Okay.
But if the town knows that that's not a legitimate number, then we can do an income survey, which requires that we send a letter to every wastewater user in town, ask them to fill out a short survey of their income, and then we compute that to prove their actual...
Do they fill it out?
What?
Do they fill it out?
What's the participation rate?
It's, that's, that's...
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Especially in a town that's kind of divided over different things, you know, some people don't want it, some people want it. I've, I've gone to towns where we've had a public meeting, everybody in town showed up, we were done that night. I've gone to towns where I couldn't get enough to make a legitimate survey. We have to have at least 85% return for an MHI. We have to have close to 100% for a LMI, because everybody that doesn't respond goes in on the high side, and that usually pushes it their own direction.
Can you have a combination? Could we do municipal bonds where the rich people invest in their own city and the rest of the poor people get a grant?
No.
Really? I mean, is there anything you can do?
Can they do that?
Do a combination of things?
I don't think, no, not really. Like, a lot through you.
Thanks. Yeah, I can't see, I can't see the SRF or USDA doing that. They're gonna invest some of their money in the project, they want it to meet their standards, and they're not gonna...
Right, right. So, explain to me why the 40-year funding is cheaper than the 20-year, because in the long run, you've got a whole lot more interest. So, how does that work out cheaper?
Keeps your debt payment low, and if you would like to, for whatever reason, if you guys have extra cash on hand, you can actually pay that loan off early, and there's no prepayment penalty for that.
Okay, so, and, and so it's not bonded? I mean, it's not, you don't have to require, pay, wait five years to pay off the bond, right? Like some, some, some of the loans, like the one we have on Sharon Street, that's funded by bonds, so that you have to wait at least five years for the first bonds to mature to start paying off. Is that what you're looking at?
Usually, it's, it is a bond, but I'm just saying, and it's, it's spread out over 40 years.
Right.
But like, if you guys, you know, down the road 20 years, if you had enough cash to pay it off...
So, there's still some time has elapsed before you can start paying it off?
Right, well, you, I mean, you, like, paid off completely? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we paid chunks. Like, we've got, so, so we have a sales tax that we bring in, 60% for infrastructure, so we say, okay, we're gonna take all that. But I, I told us the other day, we're not supposed to use that for bond or whatever, and I don't know, I've gotta check that one out with the lawyer. But suppose that we just, somebody gives us a million dollars, and we say, we wanna pay off 50,000 on here, can we just come in and pay it off at any time, or do we have to wait until those bonds mature, like the five-year bond, the 20-year bond, or whatever?
I'm not sure if there's like a minimum, I guess you have to wait, but if you wanna make extra payments, that's certainly okay too.
Okay.
I know with the SRF that he had mentioned, they have a five-year minimum. You make payments the first five years, but you can't prepay if you have five years down there.
Right, that's where we are with Emeritus and Sherrin Street, and that, we have to wait, the first bonds mature five years so we can start paying. But there'll be five that we can, that we can, but you can pay the third ones off, and that saves interest.
Is there a question?
Yeah. You're talking about funding A, B, or C. Is there a possibility of combining the loan together, or grant, or whatever, different funding than one?
Not, there is. It's up to, like we were just saying, if you use SRF, they're gonna want you to use their money, they're not gonna wanna have private money coming in, because they wanna be, they wanna be in control of what gets, what improvements get made, and make sure that it meets their recommendations, but...
Can you explain, the SRF is state revolving, is that right? How, I mean, I understand bonds and I understand some of this other, but what is the, what's the philosophy of the state revolving fund? How?
It's a loan.
Okay.
Low-interest loan.
Okay, so, is that, can you pay that off early?
Yeah, like we just said, you can pre, you can start prepaying after five years. The first five years, you just make your, your regular amortization payment.
Where's the money coming from?
It comes, it should come from your sewer rep, your rep...
No, I mean, where does the money that we borrow come from?
Comes from, it's like 80% federal money from EPA, and then state puts in a 20% match to that, and then they offer that as a low-interest loan to the communities. Sometimes it may have $100,000 loan forgiveness component to it, just depending...
What does that mean?
It's kind of like a grant, yeah, but we basically, yeah, but they call it a loan forgiveness.
And how do you get that?
You, again, it goes back to the eligibility, they look at the user rates. It's not usually too hard to get there when you're looking at a project of this magnitude, I would say, but I don't know what your expenses are with that.
Marty, do you think that's a good source?
Well, when they decide, when you pick a project, say, okay, we're gonna do the lagoons with, with the irrigation, then they submit it to WeWAC, and then the SRF and the USDARD and all the funders sit in the same room and look at this project, and then they decide who's the best fit for it.
But we have no say. It's WeWAC decides.
Well, if you wanna use their funding, that's...
If you wanna use that funding, yes.
But right now, they're kind of pointing at these guys.
Right. We already did that.
Yes, we had that, we had that before.
Yeah.
And they, and they base it on what's best for you, they don't base it on what's best for them. They're gonna look at it, and USDA's gonna say, we can fund them, it's gonna be the least cost, best...
But, but what I just said, you said the 40-year is cheaper than the 20, it's the most favorable. It is not the cheapest, it's just the, the payments are less, so, that's two, that's two distinct things.
It's like buying a pickup on time. You fund it for four years or six years, the payment gets less, but you pay, you pay more interest.
Exactly, but they'll pay more.
But what they have to look at is...
The taxpayers are gonna keep paying and paying and paying until it's paid.
But they look at what's best for the rate payers also, what, what they think they can afford, 'cause if you come in and say...
But that's what, we need to know that, so we can...
And it may be better for the rate payers to pay it off over 40 years, instead of paying something else off over 20 years, because it could lower their payment by 20 or 30 dollars a month.
And they're also saying that, you know, if you're using the pickup analogy, they're saying that one pickup's gonna last you 20 years, another one's gonna last you 40 years.
Yeah, that's basically that.
But then you can use that analogy of lower payments, so you can win more of them, so after a while, you bank them, because you've got too many, they all went good. I mean, I'm just saying, we need to know everything before we even think about any of those options. The other thing is, and I don't wanna hurt anybody's feelings, but I want us to keep control of what we do, so if somebody says, we will fund you, but you have to do this, the lagoon is no problem for us because of the high water table in this community and also because of the lack of land. So, I'm not saying I'm anti, I'm just saying that's a problem, and we need to, you know, take a urgent look at it. Questions, audience, anybody?
Which of the systems allows for the most growth in capacity? If you do replace the mechanicals, are you limited to how many more rounds of form you can add?
No, you're... You, it would be, but your mechanical plant right now is oversized. When they designed it, they were projecting the community's growth to be a lot greater than what it was, so right now, one of the problems Larry's got now there is that sometimes you get ice in the winter, that's because you don't have as much flow coming in as it was designed for, and the water takes longer to go through the plant and goes off and up that freezes in the part winters.
So, if we double the number of homes in town, the plan we have is still gonna work?
Works better.
It should, yeah.
Okay.
So, you've been getting by with one clarifier, you have two clarifiers, you've been getting by with one and meeting limits for, I don't know, six years, five years? Now, one of the issues DEQ had was you have two clarifiers, you've been, one of them's broke down, but using one of them meets the limits, but they want redundancy, they want two of them so that you can handle flows still with one of them out of service, but the one you have goes out of service, you don't have a backup. But, so, they were designed for, for higher flows. The same with the oxidation ditches. Supposed to have a lot less retention time in it for when the water goes in than when it comes out, and you're, you're way, way over on time, or what that is, was, the point you have will handle a lot of substantial growth.
Is that supposed to be shallow, so that it evaporates faster?
Um, no, it's, your ditch is shallower than most of the newer oxidation ditches.
That was a standard design done in the 60s, and, I mean, there's, there's a lot of them, and they work pretty well, honestly, but it's just a different design by using, we do deeper systems now, but we use things like pumps and stuff to be able to get the mix, to get the mixing to happen. Right now, you're just using panels, two panels are what's doing the aerating and mixing, but it works, you know?
Back when a lot of this stuff was designed, I, they came in, assumed every town in Nebraska was gonna grow, and we know that doesn't happen. I've worked with a lot of towns whose sewer treatment plants, they couldn't keep operating because they didn't have enough water, or they would have to dump water in through the, through a manhole. I've worked with a lot of towns that they came in back in the 60s and 70s and thought, we're gonna grow this much, and they put in two or three of their own as well currently. They have one they've never used, and they have one they used for a little while, now they're barely keeping one full.
And now, and, and you don't wanna put fresh water in there, because that ruins the process, right?
It'll slow down the treatment process.
So, if we, if we don't go with the lagoon, go, what's the other?
The chemical, the spring up that there exists.
Okay, so, so you care, you pump that out, right?
To, to do the work.
Yeah. Instead of putting it in a lagoon, do we have to pump that out? You said something about running some irrigation systems and...
That would be, that's what the lagoon option.
Oh, that's the lagoon option. So, do we have to clean that out at any point, what we're building? What do we have, like...
No, you can, you can do the improvements to the existing plant while it's under operation.
Okay.
You should, should...
But where does the wastewater go, is what I'm asking? Does it?
Right now?
Yeah.
It goes through the plant, and it gets, it goes through the aeration basin of the oxidation ditch, and it...
Just to evaporate?
Well, no, it feeds, that feeds the, the microbes in the wastewater oxygen, which allows them to, to grow and goes into the clarifier where the solids settle out and the clean water goes out the top, the clean water goes into the receiving stream. The solids go out and sludge, and are pumped out into the truck and...
So, we pump that in the truck? That's what it's pumped out?
Yeah.
What do we do with that?
Land apply it or take it to the, to appropriate facility to be discharged.
It can be land applied?
Right, yep.
At that point? So, what we have, if it's in, could still be land applied?
Yep, and it would be, what was proposed in the, in the improvements to the existing plant was adding another tank out there for settling out solids in the sludge, 'cause right now, there's nothing out there to do that. The sludge is just pumped out from the clarifiers and applied, fill land as mostly, and it's mostly liquid. If we had a digester out there, we could get rid of some of the, kind of concentrate it more, so it's more solid, and you'd have less hauling and less...
So, should our estimate of cost then, or does our estimate of cost include a vehicle or a pump or whatever it's a handle at, or is that, is that just something we have to? Just like we have not included the lagoon cost, would, did we not include the equipment to...
We, we added a cost for adding the digester, adding the additional tanker blowers at the plant, and also a better truck for...
We, that's in that, yeah.
It's not in, yeah, it's not in the original report, but we did a cost estimate later for...
Okay, okay. All about figures here.
And we did, when, we did meet with DEQ before we submitted this to the Water/Wastewater Advisory Committee, just to make sure that the recommendations that were in the report were what DEQ was going to agree to for construction, just so that we didn't get to the funding process and have them come back and say, well, wait, you gotta, you know, add this processor, add anything else. We wanted to make sure that the number we were taking to the funding agency was as accurate as possible at this stage.
Okay, I have a, we can send this sludge out for agriculture land. Is there a value to that?
There is.
You know, I'm from up farm, so I do hog or cow or...
Yeah, that is kind of a, as long as the people, you can give people the, that'll want it, there'll be land application agreements if you land apply it to fields. Some farmers are, you know, if you have, everybody's pretty comfortable with pig or cattle, manure, but some people kind of have a stigma attached to it.
We don't think we charge for it then.
Well, I don't know what the value is, you know?
It's free fertilizer.
Yeah, I mean, it's fertilizer quality.
It doesn't have a strong nitrogen component, like, so the problem, like, if you do, if you're treating irrigation, if you're doing the land app, what we call land application from the lagoons, where you're just taking the wastewater, there's very little nitrogen left in it, so it's not, it's basically just water. But if you're doing the sludge from the digester, like he's talking about, if you keep the mechanical plant, you have the digester, you take the sludge, which is the solid part of the wastewater, and land apply that, it has a little bit, has some nitrogen value that you can actually measure, and it's worth something, but it's maybe like putting four pounds an acre of nitrogen on, so it's not like you're gonna gain...
You're still gonna have to...
Yeah, you're still gonna have to do your supplemental...
But it helps, yeah. So, the lagoon, do you have to have land close to that to pump?
Yeah.
Ideally, yeah, you, you don't wanna be, probably, we have places where we go maybe up to a mile, we don't usually go a lot further than that, 'cause it's just, you gotta put that pipe in the ground to get it, to get it to pivot. Maybe what it, just the cost magnitudes that you were looking at, land application versus rehab?
So, had the... So, had, uh, what was in the report for the four options, um, I'll tell you what they were originally and then what they were after we changed it from twenty years to forty years. So rehabbing the existing plant, um, the construction cost estimates were the same, for present day value of it. The rehabbing the existing plant was two point seven million, and the lagoon with the land application was four point nine million. That was in present day values, and the report originally evaluated those options both over twenty years. And adding in operation and maintenance costs, annual costs. Um, the rehabbing the existing plant came down to a net annual cost of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years. And the lagoon with land application came out to an annual cost of four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars a year over twenty years. But then when we were asked to change the land application lagoon to a forty year life, that dropped that number down to three hundred and seven thousand dollars a year.
Is the life of the mechanical plant really only twenty years?
That's the design value that the state, you're supposed to design wastewater systems or water systems with a twenty year lifespan. I mean, your plant's older than twenty years old.
So as soon as you pay it off, you get a balance.
And there's been improvements out there, you know, pumps have been replaced and stuff, but, I mean, a lot of the components are ugly original, they've had maintenance done, some some rehab work done, but nothing significant, no major overballs. You will have, I mean, you'll have more, with the mechanical plant, you'll have more annual costs, the annual costs for operating a plant. Uh, operation, maintenance for your plant were estimated a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, as, you know, testing and electricity, 'cause you got more pumps.
Now, that's which one?
The for the rehabbing existing plant. And the estimated annual operating and maintenance cost for the lagoon option was eighty one thousand.
And you know, it was a hundred and sixty?
Yep. So it's a half roughly, that's because you have less motors running and you don't have as much testing, because you're up in the lagoon, you're not gonna have as much time out there, man hours. You're gonna be land applying throughout the growing season, but won't be hauling sludge as much.
But you're gonna use that savings to pay off that other two million dollars?
Right.
When you're, when you're hauling the sludge out, how many times a year do you have to do that? At, I mean, just run.
Uh, I couldn't tell you offhand with with the digester, how much it would be, but what you're hauling now, Larry?
Sometimes it's two loads, three loads a week, sometimes it it varies on what's happening, time of year it is.
But we would, we would size the digester so that you wouldn't have to land apply during the winter, because you're not really supposed to put sludge on frozen ground.
Well, the thing I'm looking at is like in the summertime, when they're raising crops, then you're gonna, you're gonna have a problem with taking it. You'd probably put it in a pasture if you knifed it in, so it don't burn the grass, but I seen years back where they were throwing it on top of the ground in the pasture, they only done that about twice, I was in that. That's what I'm looking at is what what option you have there of hauling that sludge out.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's what the digester would size, so that you wouldn't have to be worrying about when, you know, I got a, just pick up a window to be out there and taking care of that, and that's one of the things that's in the, your plant has a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit, NPDES permit, and in there, you're supposed to have a sludge management plan that says what you're gonna be doing with the sludge and all written out, and you're supposed to have, you know, land secured for for where you can apply it and the grievance for all that.
And that would have to be grievance with the landowners.
Marty, how long would it take to do this income survey?
Depends on participation, sometimes they take two to three months. Usually what we do is send out the surveys and wait a month for them to come back, then I tally up and figure out who hasn't, and then we'll send out another survey to the people that did not respond, that takes at least a a minimum of another month, and then eventually we'll go out three to four months later and start knocking on doors and see if we can get people to fill them out in person, like, it's, you know, some people won't give you the information, they they just absolutely will not, but.
We could go a hundred percent of the, definitely.
Well, I think if to get an MHI, which would work for the USDA, we'd have to have eighty five percent. Uh, if you're doing an LMI to get to like the SRF or the CDGB loans, then you need almost a hundred percent participation. So.
It would seem to me that this survey is very, very important to our community, because we have lots of infrastructure problems.
Yes.
And until we can get our income down below, you know, to where we can get some of these grants. Because right now, I just looked at last year's financial statement, and we made thirty thousand dollars in the sewer fund. So if we're gonna have to increase, I saw one projection, sixty dollars per household in our sewer rates, that's a heck of a jump. And I don't even know if that would pay for it, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
If you can get, no, I've I've gone to some towns that we've had, tried to do a community meeting, and have half the town show up, gone to them, and nobody shows up. Depends on how involved your community is in this. We've got to get them to realize that if we can get the income proven down, that it's, they're gonna be eligible for grants, which is gonna keep money from going out of their pockets.
That means participation.
Yeah, participation is what is the key, and I I've had, I've had, I've had them fail before where I could not get enough even knocking on doors.
So your company is Midwest Assistance, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that any cost to the city?
Um, yes. What what we agreed with the previous administration was, I think they were gonna pay twenty five hundred dollars. And normally, our company bases it on how big the town is, we were gonna get part of it as a grant through the the USDA, and that was a year ago, so we'd have to go back and make sure that that would work again. They.
So we get a grant for what?
The USDA sometimes will help us fund part of an income survey.
Can you guys use, um, an income survey out of, um, like, we're gonna currently probably do one out of North East Economic Development, and, uh, and then we'll be doing an income survey as well, so, um.
Well, you probably only need one, if they're gonna do it, then you.
Yeah, so, and you can use them.
I I would, you can use that.
Yeah, because they follow the Department of Economic Development standards, so they're.
Okay, so yes, you can get them to do it for free. And I have done for some smaller towns, the USDA would let us, would would help us, pay us to do it. And some of the bigger towns where there's a lot of footwork, then they don't give enough money to get it done. And it depends on participation, if it's all done by mail, it's not that big a deal, but if you gotta start knocking on doors, that's where it starts running into additional costs.
What's what's the average income have to be to qualify?
Uh, I'd have to look in this town.
For what exactly?
Like the.
Grant and the grant.
For the grants.
For the CBG grant, you have to meet a LMI percentage, which is low to moderate income, I'm not sure exactly what cross it is at, but I know they just share.
Right now, they're thirty nine point forty four percent.
Okay.
And you gotta get to fifty one percent.
So the higher you are.
You need to be fifty one percent low to moderate income, I don't know what the dollar threshold is.
I don't either, Charlie didn't send me that.
So what we're saying is fifty one percent of the people are low to moderate, 'cause the higher that percent is, the more you are low to moderate.
You have to have more people, so that's why you have to have fifty one percent, you have to have, just be over the half halfway mark of low to moderate income.
Yeah. And we don't know what that low to moderate is, that's that's not helping us, we've heard that.
Right, um, if you talk to the development district, they're gonna come up and do that income survey for you guys, they should have that information.
Now, Anthony, you were shaking your head a little bit ago when we were talking about rates, do you maybe wanna speak a little bit about what the rates might be?
Yeah, sure, so we do have some preliminary cost estimates that USDA figured, I don't know, Ryan's gotta look at that one, we we kinda changed the scope a little bit on the, uh, lagoon uh, alternative, just because we thought there was too much land, um, in the initial estimate, so we kinda reduced that and other things, but I guess, I'm not exactly sure if we can fund this treatment plant, we have done it, done it in the past, but I have to get a concurrence from my boss before that can happen. But, um, so basically, as far as from an income standpoint for us, you guys are fine, 'cause you guys have the low income, you have, we can give you the lowest interest rate, which is two point five percent. And so we're looking at now, if if we could, according to these estimates, and also, our funding is based on the amount of users you guys have, which was provided me by the previous administration, so I don't know if it's exactly correct, so the funding could vary a little bit. But so this is going off of three hundred and sixty users, and so for, what's looking like right now for the mechanical treatment plant, if we can fund it, it's about two point seven, three five million dollar loan, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant. And.
How much grant?
A hundred and twenty five thousand. And these are preliminary estimates, they may need to be adjusted. Um, but I calculated if we could fund the mechanical treatment option, user rates would probably be somewhere in the fifties, middle fifties.
Are you talking about the mechanical plant and the two point seven also?
Yeah, that's the, that's the mechanical, yep.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
For the lagoon option, we changed that to total project cost of about three million dollars. Um, what that's looking like is a a grant again of a hundred and twenty five thousand, the loan will be a little bit more, two point eight seven five million. And what's looking right, looking like right now, monthly cost per user would be about the middle forties per month. And the reason it's a lot cheaper for the lagoon is because there's less operation and maintenance costs every year, um, 'cause the debt service is basically about the same for both loans. Uh, but we also have reserves, which is just a requirement of USDA, which can be good and bad, the good thing is, I guess, according to me, of course, um, is they'll make, we make you guys set aside a certain amount of money every year for, uh, just in case you have an urgency one year, so that way you can make your debt payment on time, and then also, like with the mechanical treatment plant, there's a lot more moving parts, so we have you keep a reserve to replace those when those do fail, so you don't have to worry about trying to get that money, you know, where that money's gonna come from, when they do eventually run out.
So the reserve, to clarify, the extra money that they pay, and they get to keep, but they can spend it on emergencies when they come up.
Right, yeah, you just gotta let me know, and then like, once you guys pay us off, like, that's your money, 'cause, you know.
But but go back to, that's an addition payment, is that what you said?
Right, but that's, that's already included in the rates and everything.
They've already included that, so basically what they require you to do is pay like a hundred and ten percent, like, collect, they require you to collect a hundred and ten percent from your users.
Hundred and ten percent of what?
Of whatever your annual payment is.
Okay.
And then you get to keep that ten percent in a reserve, what they call a reserve account.
And that's in that mid forties, mid fifties?
Yeah.
Yep, those are both included.
And we're already at thirty, so we're paying a hundred dollars for, yeah, okay.
Would would this forty dollars be on top of their thirty that they're already paying?
Yeah, they'd have to increase to that.
Okay.
See, that's.
I didn't know if that was total.
But that that includes the reserves and the debt payments and, oh, and all that everything.
On that.
So how did the total cost change? It went up on the one project, but it went way down. Um, the original funding for the lagoon was four point nine million, and now it's three million?
Right, that was done by our en, our engineer, with USDA has an engineer on staff, and he kinda thought, and he'd probably have to talk to Ryan, maybe J D O, just to hammer those costs out, but for like the land application uh, lagoon, the initial cost included like, I don't know, it was like fifty acres of land, he kinda cut that in half, actually, thought they're only need, you need twenty five acres of land for the, for that design. So that he kinda adjusted those costs a little bit.
So the cost of the land is in there?
Yes.
And you mean, you just took a piece, a chunk of twenty five acres of land, you don't have, the, I mean, and that market value, and that's area, I assume?
Well, he based it on ten thousand dollars per acre.
And what made the other option go up?
Um, I think just some conversation between Ryan and Marty gave, have.
I don't remember what, he had, Marty had different, uh, cost opinions on, I think it was the operation and maintenance.
Okay, that's probably what it was, though, maybe changed.
Nets off of them are based on three hundred and sixty years.
Yes.
Was the lagoon calculation based on twenty years or forty years?
Forty years.
And the mechanical was based on twenty years?
That was also forty years.
That was forty years.
Nets two point five acres, low to that?
Yeah, two point five percent interest rate, yeah, both of them.
When you discuss the one twenty five on the, on the grant, is that the C B B funds?
No, that was our program.
That was your program?
Right.
So we'd have qualified for C B G B funds if we get our LMI up to fifty one percent?
If you guys would get your LMI up to fifty one percent, and then you were, uh, apply for a C B G and get the grant, then our grant would probably be taken out, 'cause that's other funds, but I mean, the loan would go down too, just because we had extra funds in the project.
The max for the C B G, that's too big for you?
I believe so, um, I have seen it higher on some projects, so that's something you might wanna ask, like, coming up and do that income survey, if those maximums have changed. And some of that also, they have like an admin fee built in there, it's like, for the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar C B G grant, they have a twenty five thousand dollar administration fee and an eight thousand dollar Davis Bacon fee uh, included in there, so you're only getting like, what is that, two hundred and seventeen thousand really for the project? But they might have also upped the C B G limit, so you might be able to get a bigger grant, you just have to ask them.
I know they have in Iowa, but they can't tell you in Nebraska.
So as far as lagoons, has, it sounds like no land has really been looked at for a possibility of being signed at this point?
No, I think in the, in the original report that was done, they were kinda looking at some area to the north and east of the existing plant. They didn't have any specific area called out, they put some soils data, some nationwide soil survey data in their report to show that the soil was suitable for construction of a lagoon, and that no specific site was ever given, identified.
Back to the the census that you talked about, that you have to follow, when, when they talk about asking people what their income is, is that just like their kids' home pay, retirement, or are they talking, um, adjusted gross income?
Usually they ask for the gross income, and then there's, the survey we send out has ten different deals on it, so that we can use it for LMI or MHI, it'll, it'll work for either one. A lot of times it'll ask for just a line off of your, um, income tax return.
Can you explain, there's a, I think maybe people wanna know what MHI stands for?
Median household income is what that is, so it 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 just, it's just a number, we'll take through it, and so if you have people ranging from zero money to fifty thousand dollars, typically, you'll end up in the middle at twenty five thousand, it just, it's just an average of what the people make in town. So if you have somebody that makes a hundred, if you have two people in town, one makes a hundred, one makes zero, the average is gonna be fifty. So it's just an average of of the incomes in town for the MHI.
And they don't really take into consideration anything like size of family or anything else, it's just gross income.
Yes, just income per family.
Yeah.
Is there any way, like, we have a, a low income housing division here in Crofton, but there's, um, you know, it's confidential what their income is as far as with the housing, but I just have hundreds of a lot of those probably, you just fill them out.
Well, and those are, and those are the people that we try and target, we don't go on the top of the hill where the big houses are, but we do, if they don't answer the door.
We're gonna kick them off.
We try and slant it, if I do it, I try and slant it, I, you know, I do an income surveys where I walk and knock on the lady's door, and she says, you don't want, you don't want my income. And then she said, I, I'm not gonna give it to you, come back if you can't get enough people, but she said, I'm not gonna give it to you, and I knew she made a lot of money, and that would slant it the wrong direction, but it's the lower income people, if you. It's the lower income people, if you can get them to give it, and I have run into those people, well, you're not gonna tell anybody because they're worried about losing those benefits, bottom rung, welfare, some type, sort of a benefit. But if we can get them in, that, they're typically on the lower end of the scale, and that tilts it in, in a good direction for, for that.
Is there anything, any way that we can help get that, or is it just by what they said?
Sometimes, we've quit going door to door, one person at a time, I have done that in the past, but we've run into some people that get a little upset. So, but sometimes if you take a member of the community, they won't fill it out because they don't want that member of the community. So the best thing to do is to try and add, um, just try and correspond with the people through the newspaper and through letters that, boy, we really need this, it's gonna make a difference of this much money, um, on rates, if we can get this lowered. So I've, I've had them fail, and I've had them be tremendous successes, it just, it depends on the town.
And then you said the percentage that we're gonna need is close to a hundred percent?
For the, no, for the M H I, you need eighty to eighty-five percent. I'd have to ask Denise what's the exception now, it used to be eighty to eighty-five.
Well, I mean, for M H I, they're already fine, because they got the property, interest rate already, so we don't need the M H I.
They don't need an M H I, so they need an L M I.
They need an L M I if they want the C D G B.
So if you need an L M I, then we need that ninety-nine to a hundred percent.
So what's L M I?
Low to moderate income. And that's what they're talking about, you need to be fifty-one percent.
But what's the fifty-one percent of low-income housing?
We want more low-income people in town than we want high-income people.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
But anybody that does not-
Fifty-one percent that does not make a lot of income?
Right. But in this case, you need a hundred percent for an L M I because anybody that does not respond gets on the high side. So if you can get all the, you need, you need every, almost everybody and all, particularly all the lower-income stuff.
And you said, um, earlier that it was about a thirty-eight percent, when was the last time that, you know, that?
These are the new figures, and they were at thirty-nine point forty-four.
No, it was based off the two thousand ten census that they released, it just recently been released, it's kind of crazy.
Okay.
Because we've been working off the two thousand census for a long time.
Right.
They just finally decided this year to update off the two thousand ten.
I think that's actually a better number, uh, percentage than what we had before. I think it was like twenty-six is what I, I still find that.
You know, and, and, you know, surveys, they're hard to get people to fill them out, you know, you really have to educate people as to why you're doing it. But, but you're right, it's hard to get a hundred percent.
And it needs to be a third party, somebody they don't know, so when they mail, if, if I was doing it, they'd mail it to me in Cody, Nebraska. And I'd be put in there that it's totally confidential, that I'm, I, and I basically don't know the people's names. Usually I'll get a spreadsheet from the clerk, and then we'll take the names off and put just the addresses down, and then we give them a code number. So one address is one, another address is two, and that's how we, we just put them into a big spreadsheet that calculates everything at the end. So, but it's confidential, we don't show you, we have to save it, uh, in case we have to prove it to the USDA if they come in and want to audit us. But we have to save those surveys and show them the information, but it needs to be, they need to know that it's confidential. Nobody in town's gonna know what was said or what was written down.
And we need to, like, check income that, or, or, and see if I gotta do that immediately?
Some of those will, yeah. Sometimes the engineers will do it, and I don't know if that's, but they, they typically don't do it for free, do you?
Income surveys? And we don't even do them.
A lot of times when we do them, we're cheap, we're cheaper than the, than the, uh, engineers to do them, but, but you can get that-
We don't do them.
Community development, they're a headache, and they're no fun, so I typically don't look to do, sometimes I get stuck with them, it's a way of operating.
Well, if we're gonna do it for free, we need to do that.
If you can do it for free, you need to do that, there are-
And, and, and they're working with that group right now.
We like to refer people to northeast Nebraska or southeast Nebraska, whichever area, there's usually people that do that.
So hopefully, we'll, we, we will have-
I've missed out on some, I'm not gonna say missed out, I got lucky and didn't have to do them because they came in. They're, they're a lot of work, and then if, especially if people don't respond and you have to start knocking on doors, that's-
Right.
Couple, and typically you only hit them from, from six to eight, you don't want to knock on doors after eight, usually they're not home, so it's small window, you hit a handful of people.
Somebody did an, a survey here once after I came to town, it was a bit, because I remember that they were kind of hounding us to be sure and fill them out and send them in. But I don't know who did it.
Yeah.
Probably you.
Well, they work with that. Smaller towns are the easier ones to get, I don't know, participation, the bigger towns, we're all in trouble.
I actually had a smaller community that told me they had just done a survey, and I said, oh, how many did you get back? And she goes, a hundred percent. A hundred percent, how did you do that? Because it just doesn't happen that often. And she had said back then that the board members got together and they went from town to town, and they had, you know, something that was taped shut so that nobody could see inside of it, and they dropped them off at each, each house, and they said, we'll be back in ten minutes. Because I think people forget about them.
Right.
And so they just said, we'll be back in ten minutes and, and we'll get it. And they, apparently there was only one older gentleman that they had troubles with, so the town board chairman went to chat with them, got him to fill it out. And I was just kind of shocked that they got a hundred percent, but it was a smaller community too.
Was it favorable?
But I don't remember, I think so, as a matter of fact, that's probably why we're talking about it.
I want to know the results, the punchline here.
Yep, yep.
This town in south-
So they all make million dollars, right?
Most towns lately on the, on the surveyers, most of them are showing too high. The, the census is showing higher than what was actual.
Yeah.
We went, I live in a small town too, we went from fifty-two percent to, when they took that new census, down to seventeen. It's like, we didn't have that much change in our small town, I don't know how that happened.
Yeah, I don't think that census is very likely.
Don't you think if the people were educated ahead of time before the survey come out?
Yes.
Yes.
Through our papers or through a fire, put on each one?
We typically have them send a letter out and have them post one in the newspaper, and sometimes we do a community meeting. I did one where they had sloppy joes and, and chips and drinks, and then the board chairman got up and made a spiel, and then the USDA lady came, told us she, it was, it'd be like Anthony, but it was in western Nebraska. The USDA lady came, then I gave up, told them how to proceed, what I would do, and how I would keep it confidential. We had, I would say twenty percent of the people in town show up, but I got twenty percent that night. So we were off to a start, and then they, we took, we brought all the letters to the community meeting, and anybody that wanted one, we pulled it out, gave it to them, got most of them back, and then the rest, we dumped in the mailbox the next day.
And it's also, it's important though, when you're educating people as to what it's for, that it's not just, you don't just have to use it for the waste part, might even use it for other, you know, projects.
Yeah, because we've got several things going, yeah, yeah.
I assume those income limits are revised every year, has that happened already for this year?
Uh, for the, for the USDA, for any, for any of them?
For the loans or for the grants or for-
Often they change that, Anthony.
Uh, we, ours is based off the American Community Survey, which was the estimates done in two thousand ten, so they haven't changed. But for the, for this, like the L M I, that, that has just changed, I think they changed that probably for five years.
I think you're right, yeah.
Because we want it to be accurate, not right before, assuming it goes up, right?
Well, it depends on who you're submitting your income survey to, sometimes they're only good for a year. Which is why when I was asked by the previous administration to possibly do one, then going through the USDA at that time, she said they're too far out on their project, they haven't picked what they're gonna do. If you do it now, by the time they get ready to ask for funding, it may be outdated and you have to do it again. So that's why they advised us to wait last time. So, and it, and it, and it ended up, if I'd have done it back then, it would, would have been already deleted, and you're, you're not looking for fu, you're getting ready to look for funding again. Like, you would have to do another income survey. So we need to get to when you start looking for funding and get a package, and then that's when we need to get doing this, when you're looking for funding.
Yeah.
Sounds like that's the next step.
So when, yeah, you, and can you tell us kind of what your plan for the future is? Like, when you start work and what, what's your-
Yeah, if we-
Do we have to get the funding started before you'll start work, I mean, before you're on beds?
I think, I think you'll, I think you'll want to get the funding options in front of you before you make a decision on which option to, to choose.
Sure.
So it sounds like northeast Nebraska Development District needs to get their income survey done so that we can get that information to both USDA and to send it into, you know, to see if there's a C D B E, Midday Development Block Grant eligibility in there, which didn't sound like there wasn't, that wasn't an option because of the L M I or the L. But either way, we would need those numbers to get a definite-
To make a decision as to which way we're going.
Yeah, well, we need the income survey to get a definite funding number from USDA and grant money so that we have accurate numbers in front of you for funding each option.
So when's, so when's the dead, when, when are we, we're under the gun, right? Are we not under some deadline?
Yes, um. It's in one of those piles. Uh, I think construction needed to be completed in twenty twenty-two. When we got involved, the report, so they were actually wanting plans and specifications, you know, bid documents submitted by October of this year, the D E Q was.
Say that again, sorry.
Uh, the D E Q wanted plans and specifications for the selected option by October of twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And they wanted construction to begin by April first of twenty twenty. And construction completion by July first of twenty twenty-two. And there's no guarantees, but I've, in other communities where we've had issues or spent time looking for funding and selecting the right funding, D E Q has been flexible with some communities in the past with those interior dates, the plans and specifications. But as long as you meet the complete construction date, they, I don't know, so like I said, I'm not guaranteeing they'll agree to adjust those other dates, but as long as you complete construction by the end date that they have listed, they-
What was that end date?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
My experience has been, a lot of times, they won't change the legal document, but as long as you're taking steps forward, they kind of look the other way a little bit. But then if you don't, if you stop making steps, then they'll come back and spank your hand for, for not, for not hitting that, so.
And the D E Q are the ones that second, that make the decision, that's who we have to keep happy.
Yep.
With that lagoon plan and selected, what's the basic criteria for that site? Twenty-five acres and?
I have to talk to-
Half of it off in town, or?
Um, there are setback distances, but they're not, it's not a half mile from, from town or anything. But I need to talk to Marty more about where he came up with his, his, uh, land requirements because he didn't agree with the report, we didn't write the report, but Marty didn't agree with it, so we would have to make sure that we're on the same page on that.
Twenty-five acres, kind of normal?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look at how it was sized, because I see the report for that one had thirty acres. And those are, they did, they sized that based on the flow information they had from the plant and the evaporation, average annual evaporation rate and average precipitation rate, and how much could be land applied for years.
How many acres would be needed for land application part?
They, the report's at thirty. Uh, no, that's- We do storage, fourteen acres, and then they said thirty acres for the actual ground for-
Small.
Facility.
That sounds awful small.
And they, and they also looked at the land right there, close to our existing plant, right?
Well, they looked at the land in the-
Did you say they did some testing, so I'm fast thinking?
Yeah, I don't know that they did testing, they just pulled up soils reports from the area that showed the, the type of soil that's in the area and whether it's suitable for constructing a new.
Is that, did you say that's an average size, thirty?
Uh, I, I don't know, I mean, it was, like I said, no, it was sized out of-
It depends on size of the plant.
The town.
Yeah, yeah.
So how much, uh, area for the lagoon itself? Fourteen?
Uh, it's, it's pretty small.
That you said, one time they started out at fifteen, one to twenty-five acres?
Well, that's what Anthony said, Marty always said. It says, well, it was done, the report said thirty acres would be needed for the facility. They were saying that the lagoon itself would be, be fourteen acres, but that sounds pretty low for the community this size.
Well, but if it's land application, you're getting a lot of, you're gonna, I'm just taking a couple of them that I've done, I think that's probably, you know, thirty-eight percent is kind of small for the land application.
How often does that have to be pumped out then?
It's usually sized for twice a year, or once a year.
On the land application?
Once a year.
No, you're probably putting it out like six or eight times.
Oh, two.
Because you're putting, you can't go more than two inches per week.
Two inches a week for corn.
What you're limited to is your maximum that you can put in. And most people, northeast Nebraska, put on six or eight inches of water a year in land application, and then some people might put another two to four inches on in the fall after harvest, just to try to get the lagoons pumped down and to get rid of the water, I mean, you could put that on.
Two inches a week for a twelve-week period as well.
Yeah, so that's twenty-four inches, and that's, it's probably a little bit high, but, so.
Just take a break, if we're ready for a break.
He's got a question, isn't he?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Going back to the, uh, going to people and getting their income, is that something that we can do locally? Go around and do that one day after?
For the survey?
Does it have to be third-party?
That's something that we can do.
Well, the information has to be tied to third-party, I guess if you gave them a, a survey in a sealed envelope with a stamp on it, or, just so that they, if they feel comfortable that you're not gonna open the envelope and look at what they make. Some people aren't gonna do it because they think you're gonna go back to the office and look at it.
Well, somebody said to the council that, and so, yeah, so. That would be, and if we, if we wrote- Yep, we're talking-
That helps if you can get the board members, some boards to go around and say, help us out, this is what we're trying to do. Give them a sealed envelope, whether they'll give it back to you, or whether you need to put a stamp on it for them to send it to whoever's gonna tally the results.
Or you could say you'll be back in ten minutes, how they will-
Okay, we need to break. Everybody would gather your thoughts and then come back and read, because we're act, we're kind of, asking the same kind of, I think. We gotta find a way to get this financed, so everybody sit, I mean, break, get a cup of coffee, roll, whatever. Ask questions, beat each other, go back to the board question. Just fire them each time, just come up with something.
Please don't lie.
Yeah, that's what we were saying, that's-
But they wouldn't be thirty-eight plus a year.
And that's the way it came out, that is the way it came out, we need to reiterate that, yep.
Somebody made all the food. So all we have to do is...
First of all, Anthony, you want to go over those rates again. I think we misunderstood each other here on, on those rates.
Right. So for the two options, um, I gave out like the mid-fifties and mid-forties for each project alternative, that's not on top of your current rate, you just have to increase your current rate to that rate. So you're only, yeah, you'd only be paying the mid-forties or mid-fifties per user per month.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes it much better.
That's the album we were talking for.
Right, okay.
We've been believing this for six months, two years, you come in and just shatter the whole thing.
That's why we want to handle this.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
Makes a, that makes a difference.
Would there be any reason to select the higher-priced one? Is there any advantage to the higher-priced one?
It's a pull-up option.
Well, I thought the lagoon was the lower-priced option.
No.
I had the lower, lowest impact on your monthly bill though, right?
Yeah. From USDA's funding standpoint, yes.
Why would you pick one that's higher on your monthly bill?
Because over the long run, it's cheaper. Like when Ryan was explaining those, that life cycle thing analysis, like you're going to not put as much money into it over the long run because it's got a longer design life, because it's lagoons, you don't have many moving parts, you know, not as much equipment's going to need to be replaced.
So the lagoon is the one that's the lowest cost to your monthly bill, right?
Takes less upkeep.
Yeah.
And that upkeep is included in that.
In that rate, yeah.
Yep, right, right.
And the life of the lagoon should be infinite, right?
Essentially, yeah.
These are hard workin', sir.
Someday you could have to dredge them, which is costly, but it depends on how, how, if they're managing area it right, then a lot of times that will go away and it'll last sixty years, sometimes the last thirty years where you have to dredge them, just depend on the weather conditions.
And our problem is whether you can get the land.
Yeah, that may be an issue.
And it's also, if it has to go out further, the further out you have to go, you have more lift stations, which is going to add to the cost again.
Do, yeah.
If you have, if you have to go further away from your plant to get...
You have to pump it, the farther you have to pump it, the more costs go up.
So if we can't get that, we're closed.
Another thought, my idea of the lagoon system and it has a design life, I picked a number, a hundred years on all it is, you should be in compliance with DEQ for a hundred years, right? Could grandfather...
Nobody's going to say that.
Of course, because it's a gamble thing, and it wears out in twenty years, maybe the rules have changed and now you need to spend, you know, ten million dollars for the upgrade.
That's a good point, maybe you talk about the PDS program and land application.
So the, the existing discharge permit you have, when we were talking to DEQ, they were reviewing the permit that you got in 2017, I think, and saying, you know, we, we're not going to try and predict what DEQ is going to require in the future. We know they're looking at total nitrogen and total phosphate limits in the future. One of the things that was in the report was, talked about putting covers on the oxidation ditch to keep it from freezing some of the heat in there, and that would help with some of the nutrient limits within the wastewater system. So they're, they're looking ahead with the, talking about that option with the mechanical plant, but, yeah, you don't know what that might have, if you go to a land, if you go to a lagoon with land application, you're not, you're putting the estuade on land, but you're technically not discharging, so you don't need a discharge permit anymore, you still need agreements, and you still have to do testing on the land to make sure that you're not over-applying anything, which shouldn't be an issue, but you give it a lot of testing, and you don't have as many, many concerns with future permit limits.
Yeah, and so like the permits, like he was talking about, those permits renew every five years. So every five years, the state has a chance to change, change the rules.
Regardless of the system you have.
On, on, on the mechanical system, on the, on the lagoon...
You don't have a permit.
The lagoon has what they call authorization by rule, so the state has a rule and it says, as long as you follow this set of rules, then, and you stay in compliance, then there's no permit, you just have to follow their rules.
They'll come out and check once in a while.
Yeah, so there's basically, you need to keep a logbook of, okay, I, on this day, I put two inches on, and, you know, and every year I took a sample and so on, so you gotta, you gotta keep some records, but there's not, like in, they're not as likely to do an enforcement type review as they are on the permit, and there's not rules changing every five years. Those rules are pretty static compared to the permit.
Does the underground water level make a difference when you put it?
Yeah.
And that why we test it before you ever pick a place, is that correct?
Right, yep. You have to be, I think, five feet from the bottom of the gage to the forefront.
Um, yeah, if you count the clay liner, it'd be five feet, the lagoon needs to be five feet above groundwater, but, but the land application doesn't, but the land application, the requirements are there, like you can't land apply on wetlands, you can't land apply within, you know, like thirty-two point, they call it ten meters, thirty-two feet from the stream and things like that, so there are...
That's out of the plant, though, in the land application.
That's from the lagoon water, yeah.
I mean, so you're pumping it out of the lagoon?
Yep, to a pit, to farm grow.
You can either go with real big lagoons that were total retention, where it's all evaporation, or you can go less of a footprint, less acres, but then you pump the water out through some...
So we're going, we're looking at a small one.
Yeah.
So you have to know what that groundwater is, so within a whole area, so that when you're pumping out, you don't get...
And it's only for the lagoons that you have to know what the groundwater is in.
But when you pump it out, you can't, would you say, I mean, for the land application...
Can't go to wetlands and streams, like you can't go, can't land apply where it would drain and go streams.
And that's kind of swampy out there, is what I'm thinking, so...
I think it's a reminder, um, if you know that.
But then you're talking about pumping out too now, because you wouldn't go too far to pump out for sure. How far would you go out?
You could...
Where's the nearest port?
Again, the cost for the...
Sure, sure.
You're talking about diva irrigation?
Right.
There's nothing out there, is there?
Yeah, there is. Northeast by south, it's a hundred acres, seventeen-dollar per month.
Yeah, but I thought it couldn't go that far.
Doesn't matter how far they want to pump.
So we're talking a lot of local parks, we're talking about a lot of mechanic stuff, a lot of things that can, we're down, where are we, you know, we go ahead and, and put a, put this item in here, we don't have to touch anything for a while, we warranty for all these pumps and all this mechanical stuff, or is it just a cash and carry thing and next year it's over?
It's a, it's a good question, it's a good question. So the mechanical plant obviously has lots of moving parts.
Exactly.
And you get a one-year warranty and that's it.
That's all you get is one year, any moving parts.
Yeah.
So, okay, we have it in for two years and all of a sudden, oh, we got problems. So then we have to start and, okay, there's something new, are we going and, do we, do we build something that's equipped for, it can be adapted to the next level of whatever they're going to be doing, or are we going to be stuck with just that?
And I, I think that's why the USDA is trying to steer the committee a little bit, community, towards the lagoon option, because there's less moving parts, and so they see that as a benefit to the community, even though you got to deal with the headaches of land and all that, and land application, there's, you know, basically, now you're down to maybe two sets of pumps, pumping, one to pump to the lagoon to do the initial treatment, and one to pump it out of the lagoon once it's treated, to get it to the pivot. And usually, the land owner owns the pivot, not the community.
So how do we know, okay, they put this pump in here, well, and we all know, we're not stupid in none of this room here, again, a lot of things are made in China, okay? A lot of things, we just bought a big machine that had come from China, and do we, do we get American-made stuff, or we don't have no choice? I mean, do we have anything that's going to stand behind this stuff if we have a problem?
That's where your engineer kind of helps you a little bit. Some, like, some pumps come with five-year warranties, or it's a five-year prorated warranty?
The pump itself.
The pump itself, yeah.
I mean, we're, when you, when you get plans and specifications for this, the specification book can be very thick because we're calling out very specific materials for the pump and, you know, pump suppliers that have so many installations and have been making pumps for twenty years, and we're not going to just say anybody that can beat these pump conditions can supply a pump we want to use.
Say if there's a five-year warranty on these pumps, do we have somebody that's certified in knowing how things can go bad, come and check and see how our pumps are doing, if things are wearing out before we have a disaster happen?
And we can, so the construction has whatever, one-year warranty, but the pumps themselves, they can have a longer warranty, and we can specify pumps that are, have a, you know, manufacturer's rep or someone that can fix it within so many miles or so many hour drive from the facility, just to guarantee that you have that maintenance available and you're not getting...
I thought then, with, with the, with the system like what we're talking about here, I thought you'd have more than just a one-year warranty on things, because, you know, you're, you're spreading out a lot of money out here, and, I'm sorry, I mean, you go to New York and someplace, they only, they, they get more than one-year warranty in some of their big outfits. I mean, unless you pay for it, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, usually when people want extended warranties, you pay for it, so the manufacturer will prorate some, something into his price based on his past experience, what, what kind of we've been told, we, sometimes the USDA has requirements, they kind, and they set the rules that we as engineers have to follow, you know, because their, their engineer looks at our design and it has to be what they call modest, it has to be a modest design, so they're not going to let us put too many bells and whistles on it and not too many requirements, you know, not too, so...
If, if, okay, let...
Because the federal government is trying to get most bang for their buck that they're loaning you, so...
So if we put this motor in or pump in or whatever we put in these things, okay, in a year and a half, poof, it's gone. Now, the new one that's coming out, well, I'm sorry, Charlie, this pump, or this mechanic thing won't fit in here, we got to revamp everything. Are we making it so we can adapt to a lot of different things there?
That, again, that kind of goes with the specifications, that we write them so that you don't have equipment, we do our best, as best we can to write them so you don't have equipment that's obsolete in two years, and something that's interchangeable with, you know, a pump that you can get off a shelf in five years and still fit it in there.
Back up too, because you're talking, um, if the lagoon has a pump that's going to pump into a pivot to get extra water, is that correct?
Well, you're pumping from the community into the lagoon, and then, once it goes through the new system, pumping out as well.
So, if, and, let's say, and you said you'd be using like farmer's pivot or whatever, right? So it's, it's located away from you, so how does it get there? Is that, is that going to be an underground, is that going to be, so is that, and we're going to install that, so we have to look at where that's going to be located?
Right. You'd, you'd be pumping it into a pivot, the...
And everyone, and how often does that pump? I mean, how often does that have to be cleared?
They figure, they figure pumping for twelve weeks during the growing season.
Okay.
During twelve weeks, two inches, down to the ground.
Two inches per week, twelve weeks, is that right? So we're taking, now, so now we're going to go back to just containing, and we're going to haul that same amount out of there. What are we going to do then?
From your existing plant? That, so that gets treated and the water that gets treated, you know, it takes all, it takes all the microbes out, the bad things out, and the clean water just goes into the creek.
Okay, and the slides?
Sludge get hauled out.
How often?
Well, we would...
Two to three times a week, is that right?
That's what's the amount, but we don't, we do that, we're sizing so that you would be able to store enough sludge during the winter, it's pretty possible you can apply it during...
So of those two, just those two processes, because that's getting rid of the sludge, which is the most effective, the most, which is, causes the most damaged parts or the most costly to operate, or would, like when you figure the cost of operation, those two items would have to be looked at. So disregard the cost of the plant and look at those two items, and which one is the most cost-effective?
Then your lagoon would be more cost-effective because you're not spending the time or energy on pumping and hauling.
But the building of it would be the most effective?
Of the...
Of the two?
Yep.
Is the cost of that line to the pivot included in these costs?
The, they had, uh, they actually had the pivot cost included in the land application option.
Irrigation pivot?
Yeah. So, well, you were talking about using an existing pivot, they already had, they had a pivot included.
So what do they value that at?
They had seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do you have to get land usage to run pipes through the land then that goes out to wherever?
You would need, if you're going, yeah, you would need your, if you're going to an adjacent landowner that you have an agreement with for putting up the pivot, you would need to have that in there. If you're going through somebody's field, you would need a easement from them or through them.
So where is that pivot, Jerry? Is that just right on the first wall outside of town?
That's right, where you turn, turn there and you're going toward the highways, just go about eight mile, that's what the pivot sits.
On the, on the west side, the Gathers?
East side. East side.
Yeah, well, there's one in the AC lights.
That's Ann Stewart's.
Yeah, is that why?
They've got now, they've got RTs, well, they've got... That's what they're using. They got a generator.
So do we have to cross our curbs and get there? No.
Yeah, you would, yeah, no, you would.
Is that creating a problem?
Good. How close is where we're transiting?
So how big of a lagoon would we have to build for the site to cross and, and looking at, we're going to expand? What, how, how many acres would this lagoon have to be on?
The study said fourteen acres for the lagoon itself.
Fourteen?
The surface acre of the lagoon at, at the site for the lagoon, you know, your water surface, and then your top apartment going outside of it, they had figured thirty acres total for the lagoon, thirty acres total for the lagoon site. I don't know, Marty had something different?
Yeah, twenty-five.
Correct.
And that would be for us town to expand enough, or would we have to look at something bigger, say if we get a, a bus, everybody's starting to build and cross it, you know, we get like forty, fifty, you know, it's something to look at. Well, you never know, it's a long time.
They size that for, for future flows, they look at, they project what the population and flows are going to be twenty years from now based on what it's been doing.
So I assume correctly that once the increases, whatever system you pick and their sort rates increase, they never go down again? I mean, once the debt, they can, you don't lower the rate, it just never happens, does it?
No. I mean, once you pay off whoever you, I guess, get a loan with, yeah, then you can...
You guys got to get paid, huh?
I would think whichever system has the lowest impact on the monthly user fee, be the one to pick. The lagoon system sounds to me like fewer, fewer moving parts and all that good you have, if you can find the land, that's what you do.
And I think the land is the issue.
I think you can find it though.
That cement plant probably would be on it.
It's not big enough. Water, one quarter of the ground.
So Ryan, did you not say we should get the survey done before we decide on which option?
You would have, if you get the survey done before you decide on an option, you would have more options to choose from.
As far as, you'd have more...
More options, more financial options.
Funding options, funding options, right?
But we can, but we can choose whether we have the lagoon or the plant at any point.
You can, if you want to, but having the income survey done would, would give you, you know, if you're looking at the two options and you would have three funding options available for each, you'd be looking at six different scenarios, whereas if you don't want to be the, if you don't want to look at that and you just want to select one option and then look at three funding issues for, you can do that too, just, how much do you want to look at?
I think where we are, if I, if I bet this right, where we are, we have to make a decision between the lagoon or not the lagoon. We have to make a decision, um, where we get the money, but that doesn't matter which one. We have to make a decision, um, where we get the money, but that doesn't matter which one of us would choose. That's, but, but the money and the, the gist of the money is the lagoon is gonna cost us more to build and it's gonna cost us less to run in any case. So is that, is, is that right?
Yep.
So, um, and then from there on, and then, and then any other of the deals that come in is like the availability of the land or that kind of thing, which would be just logistic work that's in, right? Am I right on the path?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Your lagoon would have a longer timeframe to build. You're gonna have more, to find the site, you have to, you'd have to find the site and then do soil borings and do an environmental assessment of the area to make sure that it's not negatively impacting anything.
How, does it have to go to the plant?
I got two questions.
I'm sorry. I said, how long would it have to survey and all that stuff? How long is that timeframe?
Uh, since I watch you dig up.
Yeah. But I mean, soil borings can be done in a few months. The environmental review, we have, have to do that and then submit that to the state so that can take a few months also.
As long as you don't find any, any. I found Sydney artifacts.
That's what I was.
That's brown bats.
Brown bats and.
And so will they automatically extend our due date then if we have to do that now?
We will, not automatically.
But again, if, like we say, if you, they see you taking those steps forward, they kind of work with it.
Yeah, okay.
So is that boring and everything included in the cost, is, is that extra?
Should be in the cost. It, I mean, the cost is, um.
Cost for those two items is a huge, you know, comparison to the project.
I just see if they had the, it was figured into the overall project cost. Because the overall project cost included, uh, construction, engineering, legal, uh, kind of a buffer built in there 'cause we're gonna run into some stuff that's unexpected, that can, that's, we call that contingency. And even, uh, the land costs were figured in there too.
Ten thousand acre, right, didn't you say?
I believe so.
Add a twenty, add twenty-five acres, so twenty-five acres. So maybe we'll get something given.
So what land are we looking at? That would even be an option, right?
Well, you know, lagoon construction, you have to line that with clay. What's the, what kind of numbers are we talking? I, I know there's not good clay for doing that around here. That's gotta be hauled in from quite a ways. Are, are those numbers, uh, figured into the construction of the lagoon? In the study, they looked at the soils reports for that area northeast of town and the soil studies, you know, without being specific to the soil, I mean, they didn't take it out of the ground and test it. But the type of soil that is up there, they said that that could be used for construction of the lagoon. They pack that clay enough to get a liner, it would be deceiving. But again, that's.
Now, it's just northeast of the present plant, right?
Yeah, in that area, in that area.
Who owns that land?
I, we were looking at that map, I just assumed it was road transit, is that right?
I think so.
But that'd be right outside the baseball field then?
Mm-hmm, straight north, straight way east.
So if you hit a home run, it could go in the lagoon?
If you're gonna hit a home run, you better be going north with that ball.
So what about odor? Do lagoons have odor at the least wind and night of a ballgame? Is that gonna upset people?
Generally, generally, your lagoons will have odor in the spring and in the fall when the, the process turns over the lagoon. Basically, the bottom come up to the top kind of basic way to describe it. But usually, they're gonna get the most odor, odor in the spring and the fall.
Spring would be good, 'cause that's some ballgame stuff. All would be good.
It does make a difference which part of town it goes in though too, right? I mean, you're down in the west.
Um, that's usually not, it's usually not factored in to location. Usually, location is more topography. I mean, everything's flowing towards the existing plant now, so it'd make more sense to have it off in that direction. You're still gonna pump it to wherever you're going, so it's, it's not unheard of to locate it in a different part of town.
It's not covered at all, right?
No.
That's made for that branch. No, we can't use a.
So do we have any of this information compiled, um, from you guys that have the new figures? Because I, I've got one that's quite old. It's from, I'm not even sure if it's a DEQ or who. So do you have like one of those spreadsheets?
Yeah, I have a couple here, but, um, I guess the lagoons, I need to talk to Ryan, Ryan has talked to Marty to get those figures hammered out exactly. And then, or I think we're pretty much set on, I guess, the rehabbing the mechanical treatment plant cost. I know we, we use the lower O and M, but I mean, I don't think that would affect it too much. So I think the O and M, or the cost for the mechanical, rehabbing the mechanical treatment plant is kind of set. It's just the lagoons we have to hammer out and get an exact figure.
Just so we're compared to the same numbers.
Okay, but then you'll provide that to the city so that they've got something to look at and.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's on paper.
Absolutely.
What would make the owner of the pivot want to take this water?
Uh, free water. I think Roger was saying there's minimal nutrient value in it, but it's something.
They don't have to run their pump. Usually it'd be you running your pump, so it saves them a little bit of electrical cost. It's nice if you have a pivot that has access to a well and a lagoon 'cause it's kind of nice at the end of the season to run some well water through it just to flush it, you know? Um, I s, I find that that does a good job of helping maintain the pivot and take care of it. So if you have somebody who has an existing pivot, that's kind of a luxury to have a water well like that there.
This gentleman out there, he's got a great big generator. It's got a big Cummins engine on it, pump that generates like Krispy, like Krispy does everything else. So you know, that's kind of a plus too.
So are electrical costs go up a lot? You're talking about pumping and hauling and stuff?
Yeah, uh, so if you're rehabbing the existing plant, it wouldn't really go up because you're not adding, you're adding some more equipment, but not, you would be adding, I think, some blowers and a grinder, the front end of things. But on the lagoon option, you would have less monthly electrical costs. You're not having as many pumps and motors running.
Okay. So you're, if we pump out, just say, if, 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 my percentage, yes. The city grants from him to pump through his irrigation system or?
You would have to have some type of agreement with him.
Right.
And whether he, whether it's money or.
Because it's also, it's gonna be, maybe he has the benefit, he gets some of it, what we call, for lighter. But it's also gonna cost him more too because it go into the system, it's gonna need to put wear and tear on his system too. It's not a freebie to him. It'll go cost him, and you've got a generator. How many pay that activity?
If he's, if you're pumping, if the city's pumping it to his pivot, then he's not running his generator to generate electricity for his well. He's not buying diesel or whatever he runs his generator off at the same.
If the city is gonna, gonna do the pumping, the size of the motor that they're gonna use to create the pressure pump is tremendous, they would be better off if they would just pump the liquid up to that irrigation and let this pump us through the water.
It, it depends, you, you might be surprised.
I know, I know.
It might be surprised. You would have to do an analysis to kind of figure it out.
You'd have to look at what his well is, how deep he's pumping water from and.
These are days when he comes from the two hundred feet above the ground, from the twelve hundred, three to the other. Cause I've worked with him. About three blocks, the pivot's on three blocks north of.
How big of a pivot is required to work this thing?
They, they were calculated, uh. They, they calculated it, two inches a week for twelve weeks. They only need eighteen acres.
At two inches per week, that's the maximum you can apply or, or is that calculated for this system? Or where does that number come from?
That's a maximum that the state will allow.
Yeah, for corn.
And would propped in system be one tenth of that or any idea?
I mean, if you're pumping it out onto a larger area, you wouldn't need to pump it out nearly as often. Probably with a pivot that big, you should be, you know, you would be able to go all, what's that? Half, goes halfway around, you'd probably even pump the lagoon down.
Yeah.
For a spot with that.
Yeah.
I think it took him, uh, a week. It has, I think before that, it's like a, which is three hundred acres, I think it was six days or something like that.
When they do pump that stuff, it, it's a hundred percent from the lagoon or is it blended with water?
A hundred percent from the lagoon.
And it's not really much nutrients really in it, that it's, you're just getting water and about two percent.
Yep, I mean, not even two percent.
I think that, if, would you guys agree with me that our next step is to talk to that landowners that we might be looking at buying and we need to, you know, investigate some of that? And we need to investigate the use of the pivot.
That's a good, that'd be a very good starting point for helping make your decisions.
And then we could get together and talk further about which ones.
I mean, you'll get an idea of what it's gonna take to get an agreement.
Yeah. Accepting, yes, who knows?
Everyone else, what you're asking?
Doesn't hurt.
When do you plan on doing the survey? Do you know?
Um, we'll, we'll meet with them, um, April first to do a membership with them.
Actually, we're pretty good. Cause we're, uh, actually, cause we're interested, we have meeting that there.
So, uh, when do we get that then? I can't even know.
Any other questions?
Good meeting.
And it's, um, officially, thank these people. Did I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
One second.
Okay, um, Arlene?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
That's it.
That's it.